The town council calling this meeting to order at 7:03. It is April the 2nd, 2024. All councilors are in attendance with the exception of Mr. Anderson, who is en route and should be here shortly. We have no interviews for boards and commissions. And the town manager has told me that there was no public comment submitted electronically. So if there are any citizen's statements and petitions and that they'd like to make at this time, it has to be about the business on this particular agenda because it's a special council meeting. So if there's anybody that would be interested in coming up, please come up to the mic and give your name and address.
My name is John LaBelle. I'm at 57 Island Road in Dayville, Connecticut. Having just seen the proposed budget, I will respectfully ask that the public be allowed to speak at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
We could, I guess we could always suspend the rules. Depends, yeah. When we get, when we get there, we'll take care of that for you, okay?
Thank you.
All right, moving on. There is no old business. New business is the Board of Education's budget presentation to the town council. And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Nash.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce the people that are up here at the table. We have Danny Rivero, Vice Chair of the Board. Dr. Sue Nash, Superintendent. Karen Monroe is our Business Manager, sitting in for Christine Clark as she's on medical leave of absence. And Jeff Gyo, he is our Assistant Superintendent. So we are here tonight, and I'm just going to have you follow along in hard copy, and then maybe we can get the slide deck to come up in a little bit. We are here tonight, and I'm honored to be here tonight to present the Board of Education's budget to the town council. Collectively, we are really proud of this budget and the process that we took to come to it. We look forward to sharing with you and hearing your feedback. All right, so let's dive in. All right, so I just want to flip to the second slide, second page. All right. So this is how our budget process looks here in Killingley. We start back in the fall with some of our discussions with departments and buildings. And then we move through creating a preliminary budget. And then we move through a series of budget workshops where we go in depth with our Board of Education, kind of line by line through all of the different budgets that have been presented. And then finally, March 13th is when our Board of Education votes and adopts a budget of their own. And that's what I'm going to present tonight. I'm going to present the process and then ultimately what the Board of Education has adopted as their budget for this, for next school year, for the 24-25 school year. All right, next slide. I start with a slide called "The Cliff." Are you guys on the cliff? Okay, good. I hope so. They're not able to connect it right now, so we're waiting. Yeah, so we'll see if we can connect it.
The inland wetlands last night had trouble projecting because of the water issue they had, where they lost computers last week.
So we'll work through it, we'll work through it. So I start with this slide called "The Cliff." And this, this budget cycle was unique in nature. For three years, we have become dependent on COVID relief grant funding, also known as ESAR funding. And this number, 987,405, is the amount of salaries and benefits at the start of this school year that we had in our last ESAR grant. Come September 2024, this ESAR grant will go away, and there will no longer be any ESAR funding available. And this goes for all public schools, right? This is not just a Killingley issue. This goes for all public schools. And early on, when the ESAR grants came on the scene, there was a warning about falling off the fiscal cliff in the 24-25 school year. If you flip to the next page, you'll see my analogy for this year's budget cycle. It made me think of Wile E. Coyote falling off his cliff. But in this episode, next slide, he hangs on. And then if we flip one more time, he climbs back up the cliff. And in the last slide there, he conquers the cliff. And then you may ask, how did he conquer the cliff? Next slide. Through new thinking and practice. So I want to pause here for a minute before I go any further and let the council know that I came into this budget with a lens that perhaps not all superintendents have. So I was the Assistant Superintendent for two years in this district. And I sat on the sidelines, and I was able to watch the budget process from start to finish. And I took notes about what made people feel good about the budget, what made people feel anxious or unsure, what brought frustration and confusion, and what brought people together around the budget. So long before we started building the budget this year, I sat with my entire administrative team, and I shared this collected knowledge. And I shared a new approach. I hope, my hope is that this new way of budgeting brings people together and makes people feel comfortable. One approach that we took was not going in high and then reducing like crazy on the end of the cycle, which seemed to be the pattern that we were in. I noticed that this doesn't build any trust, and it instilled uncertainty. So this year, we came in with our leanest budget, without cutting any positions or programs, to present that to the Board of Education. All right, and now it's up on the screen, so we're where we're supposed to be. You are on the right slide, thank you so much. So some of the strategies that we took for a new approach to budgeting to come in as lean as possible on the front end was to take a zero-based budgeting approach to supplies and communications. So what does this mean? Basically, this means for supplies, all of our lines were zeroed out. We zeroed everything out, so it didn't matter what was spent last year or the year before. We zeroed all of our lines out. And we built item by item, one by one, back in what we needed. And we had to justify each piece that we built back. And so it was tedious, and it was long for our administrators to do, and it was a new thing for sure. However, we needed to do that. You need to clear out, and you need to build back from zero. It's just a cleaner and more honest approach to budgeting. And then for communications, we did a similar approach. So communications could be misleading in title, but what communications means is that a lot of our subscriptions, so our online subscriptions are called communications. And we had a lot of these from the pandemic. So when we had online learning, we had a lot of subscriptions that we needed to use for online learning. And so we needed to kind of clear those out. And what we did is we did a two-prong litmus test. What we did is we asked of each subscription, do we use this more than two times a week? And if we cut that, would it cause a significant disruption to programming? And dependent upon the answer, we cut or we kept. And in many cases, we cut. So we significantly cut our communications. All right, next slide. So I had mentioned before that we itemized and justified all of our communications and all of our supplies. And this is one way that we justified. So we use this model of engaging the whole child. It's an approach that we use, a model in Killingley, behavioral engagement, cognitive engagement, and affective engagement to engage our whole child. And every single purchase had to support this model. Next slide. Coupled with our profile of a graduate. So our profile of a graduate is our North Star. We expect all of our Killingley public school graduates to have these skills firmly in place when they graduate Killingley High School. And so we need to make sure that all of our purchases lead to this North Star. Next slide. Something else that we use when we go through the budget process is our enrollment history. And in Killingley, our enrollment is relatively stable. In some districts, it tends to fluctuate. Here, it remains relatively stable. So that means our classes remain relatively stable in terms of class size. Next slide. Okay. So the first round, our preliminary budget, our preliminary budget, came in at 49,137,943, which is 4.98% increase, which we knew was way too high. And so we went through making our first round of reductions. And so I asked all of the principals and department leaders to go into their budgets and reduce by 15% off their bottom line, minus salaries and benefits, those are contracted. And so they did that, and they were able to reduce by 438,000, which is 0.93%, bringing the total down to 48,699,886, or 4.05% increase. And you can see on the next slide just how those reductions looked from department to department and from school to school. We also were able to find a grant to move some of the remaining summer school expenditures into, which was about $71,000. And so at the end of the day, we were able to reduce again by that $438,000. Next slide. And so while I had my operating budget, we do oftentimes have multiple decision packages that departments and schools bring forth. And decision packages are usually new positions or positions that we have in grants that the grant is running out, and we would like to put them into the operating budget. And so we had several decision packages coming forward. I will say that most of these didn't make it past kind of initial discussions. These decision packages were the ones that made it through those initial discussions to, for consideration to the Board of Education. And they totaled about $285,000. Now, if you remember, in the beginning of the slide, we have, we had a lot of salaries and benefits tied up in ESAR grants. And we knew we couldn't bring all of those in a decision package. That would just be too much. And so in the next slide, you can see we were able to keep some of these positions through using some other creative funding sources, whether it be other grant funding, moving some things out of grants to move positions into grants, or to utilize retirements, or reutilizing positions in different ways across the district. And while it says, you know, these are 000, they do cost, obviously, these positions cost money, but they are zero, they are budget neutral to the operating budget. They do not add any money to the operating budget. All right, next slide. And so with those decision packages that I just mentioned and that reduced operating budget, what I presented initially to the board was a budget of 48,985,457, about 4.66% increase from last year. But we knew that was still too high, so we went back to work. We went back to work and looked for places where we could again start to reduce. So as you know, Christine Clark has been on medical leave for some time. She is our Business Manager. But between surgeries, she did come in for some half-days to go through our benefits, our salaries, and our utility lines. That is typically where we might find some surplus funds. Once all those lines were gone through for these three areas, we were confident that we had surplus funds to use without risking going too low in our current budget year. So at this time of the year, and again, this was back, you know, a month or two ago, we still need to have money in our budget. We still need to have some surplus in our budget. You're never entirely sure what could happen. You could have a student with multiple needs come into your district. You might need to replace or repair something. I'm sure you knew that yesterday at the high school, we had an HVAC issue, which unfortunately, we had to have students evacuate, and then we couldn't bring them back in for the day because of an HVAC issue. That had to be fixed. It was, but it costs money. So those things are unexpected. You don't know if they're going to happen, just like in your house. Sometimes something happens, and you have to fix it, and it costs money. So it's only the beginning of April, so we want to have some money left in our budget. But we, once we determined that we had those surplus funds, we had to determine what could possibly be pre-purchased. Not everything is pre-purchase worthy. So you can't pre-purchase any contracts. You can't pre-purchase any professional development because those contracts, they have to be dated for the year that the service is provided. So you can't, you can't pre-buy those. But you can't pre-purchase supplies or equipment, property, those things like that. And so we were able to identify 699,000 worth of items that we could pre-purchase. And so we did. And in the next slide, you'll see what that brought the budget down to, a second time, a second reduction, if you will, that I was able to bring to the Board of Education. So up at the top there highlighted, you'll see 48,586. And that was the ultimate reduced budget, so after two reductions, if you will. They also, the Board of Education also decided to move forward some, not all, but some of the decision packages totaling $211,000. So grand total there, as you can see, 48,212,561, which is a percent increase of 3.01 and a rate increase of 0.78. And so that's what our Board of Education did come to a unanimous vote on, on the 13th of March. All right, so let's look at how that number kind of divides up amongst the various budget lines. So in this chart, this is a chart that shows the percent of the increase of each line of each area of the budget. And so you can see the largest increase would be in our salary and benefits line. That's where our largest increase is. And then, pardon me, you can see there are much smaller pieces that make up that total whole. One thing I want to draw your attention to in this chart is that even though it's really hard to see, even with my glasses on this chart, but probably even harder to see up there, you can see there's a negative amount for supplies, a negative amount for equipment, and for utilities. So we actually, at the end of this budget cycle, decreased that, those overall lines from last year. All right, and the next slide is a different look. So this is the percent of the budget as a whole, if you will. So it's just another way to look at it. Each section of the budget as it contributes to the whole. Again, you can see how salaries and benefits are the lion's share of our budget. All right. And the next slide, you can see a historical view. You can see how the superintendent's budget, the Board of Education budget, and the adopted budget have looked over time. All right. This is the elephant in the room. At least, it was the elephant in the room when I sat on the sidelines as the Assistant Superintendent. And it's how much money will we give back to the town? So I want to assure you that we do have funds that are still in our budget. And we should, because it's April. If we didn't, that would be poor budgeting. But what will we give back? And I can say with confidence that we will give back enough to replenish our non-lapsing to its cap, as we have spent some of that money on projects this year. But that's about all I plan to return this year. Oh, good, we'll just go back to that. There you go, thank you. All right, so I do hope this presentation has allowed the council to see that we have been as efficient and fiscally responsible as we can while still leaving enough to uphold our educational goals. And at this time, I welcome questions and comments about the presentation, but also about the budget book that you have in front of you. You all have the budget book in front of you. Know that the intent of that budget book is, is really not to provide like itemized detail, but rather overall budget line totals. However, I have noticed while sitting on the sidelines that some members of the town council would like some more detail. So I have provided, it's on your, on your tables, the expanded form of this budget. So it has all of the itemized details in it. And it is rather long, because when you do a zero-based budget, your itemized detail list does tend to expand and expand. So that, it is, it is long, but we are happy to dig into that if you would like to. Also, something to note before we get into this, this book, is that in your budget book, so I don't know if you flipped, I'm sure you flipped through this budget book, you might have noticed there's in the, the column where it says percent change, increase, the percent change, there's either, there's three little dashes in some areas. And I just want to be completely transparent. That's either indicating a 100% increase or a 0% increase to that line. For some reason, our software is not showing the 100% or the 0%. Karen and I cannot figure out why, but it's, somehow it is doing that. And so I want to be 100% transparent. That's what that, those three dashes mean. And as in previous years, you may notice that some lines look like they've increased substantially. And when I say substantially, I mean 100% increase on that line, particularly in supplies. And I want to, if you, Jen, if you could just move that one slide, I want to show an example. So this is what I've always felt, I wish you didn't hear me. Thank you, Jen. This is what I always felt was missing, because we have heard about this so many times. Like if you, if you use your surplus funds in the, for the, you know, buying, pre-spending, if you will, supplies or items from the next year's budget, it looks like you have a larger percent increase. And I felt like that was always confusing or hard to visualize, or maybe it was just me. It was hard for me to visualize this, so I made this chart, maybe only for myself, but I hope that it helps other people. So in scenario one, you can see in school A for '23-24, they budgeted $10,000 for supplies. And for the next year, they increased that by 10%. So they, you know, $11,000 for supplies. So it would only look like 10% increase on that line. But in scenario two, that same school used their surplus funds to pre-purchase their $10,000 worth of supplies in the '23-24 school year. And so that line zeroed out. But in the '24-25 school year, they didn't buy anything more than they would in scenario one. They bought the same amount of, of supplies. It just looks like 100% increase because we started from zero. So I hope that's helpful for, for us to understand as we move through and you see 100% increase, and you think, what is that, 100% increase? So that's usually why. When you see 100% or something that's very large, the percent increase is very large, most of the time, it's due to some pre-spending. All right, at this time, I welcome questions, comments, yes?
So if you're pre-spending the money that you're going to be using for the next year, why would you be increasing 100%? So you'd be spending that $10,000, then you'd be spending $11,000.
So they're in two fiscal years, though. That's the difference there.
But you're using that to pre-buy for 2024-25.
Yep.
So if you're using that to pre-buy for 2024-25, you're still increasing, right?
Well, what, what will happen is the next year...
I know what you're getting at. All right, I, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you're looking at, so that money spent in the current fiscal year out of our surplus. And if they're showing that for supplies for the upcoming fiscal year, but they've pre-bought it, then why is that still shown in the new budget if it's going to be spent in the current budget? Are you still going to be purchasing that additional $11,000 in the upcoming year if you're spending $11,000 out of the current surplus in the current fiscal year?
I see what you're saying. I'm going to try to clarify. If I don't clarify correctly, you can just... Because we, so moving forward for, if we did this scenario two, let's just say for school A, right? So the '24-25 school A supply line would be zero. So the following school year, so, right? So it would, I should have done one more scenario. That would have been better. Thanks for the feedback. So the following school year, the '25-26, would show that 100% increase.
Katie, was that what you were...
Yeah, she just needed an extra column.
Or you could have labeled these differently. If the first one was '23-24, but then you would actually change it from $10,000 to $21,000.
Yep.
Then it would be zero, and then this would be '24-25 at zero.
Yeah.
And then '25-26 would be your 12,000 or whatever it would be.
Yep. Oh, thanks. I know, it is so hard to visualize that.
It doesn't make sense.
I know, it doesn't make sense. It didn't make sense for a long time for me.
Unless you're trying to try to save the, on the increase in whatever pencil costs a dime today, tomorrow it's going to cost 15 cents. Is that what you're trying to say? Because what's the difference between if you, if you have $10,000 in scenario one and for the, for the following school budget, you have $11,000, so you're still increasing 10%? It just seems like it's just a mumbo jumbo of numbers to me.
So under scenario two, what you could look at instead of, the '23-24 budget has a zero budget. But in '22-23, they use $10,000 of surplus to purchase the supplies. So '22-23, we had the expenditure. '23-24 became zero when the budget was built, when they made their reductions. And then going forward to '24-25, if you have a budget of $11,000, it's going to look like 100% increase.
So did you spend that $10,000 in '23-24?
No, you spent the $10,000 in '22-23.
'22-23?
Mm-hmm.
But it says '23-24.
Correct, because she was going forward with it, so that it would go to the '25-26 budget year. But if we go back a year...
So this, this year's line item would look like zero, but the next year, it'll look like it's a huge increase.
Gotcha. Whereas what would show up in an audit for the current year would show a $20,000 expenditure for the current year because you bought $10,000 plus the additional pre-buy.
I've got a question. So this is pre-buying from surplus that was going to come back to us. And is, is it taken out of the non-lapsing, then?
No.
Because it's going, if it wouldn't...
That's extra, that would have came back to us.
So it hits the operating costs? If it was coming back to us, if it went into non-lapsing, and you took it from non-lapsing, it wouldn't hit that Alliance District.
Well, it's already, it's already, it's not, by pre-buying, you're not impacting the minimum budget requirement going forward. And it doesn't affect the current one because they're buying at a surplus. Because there's money left that was budgeted, that's your surplus. So they're expending some of the surplus to keep the...
So it never really shows up on our bottom line anyway, the way they're doing it?
No.
To, for an increase.
It's coming out of the surplus, out of the budget that was approved.
So I have a question in regards to the .5 position for the custodian. How much actually is the footprint of the new building increase? Because you're, you're getting rid of the four portables.
Yep.
So what is the actual increase of the footprint?
I believe it's about 10,000 square feet. Was that correct? Do you remember? 10,000 square feet.
So 10,000 square feet bigger?
Yes.
Um, right. Taking away the, so how much would that be like, how much, that's not including what the portables included?
So, yes, so 10,000 more than what we have now. Yep.
But you got rid of the portables.
Right, but those are expand, so that space is expanding, so the portables, they will go away, but in addition, we will be having 10,000 more square feet.
So it includes the portables?
Well, where the portables would be, yeah. Yeah.
I've got one question. Back during, back in the slideshow where it talked about decision package summary continued, where it, you said it was budget neutral as far as the KHS reading specialist, the KIS fifth grade counselor with benefits. I understand that it's budget neutral, but in order for it to be budget neutral, something else, you would have had to have made cuts somewhere. What were those cuts that were made to offset these costs?
Sure, I can go through it. So for that particular one you're talking about, that's a retirement of a position that we are, I don't like to use the word repurposing, but I can't think of a better word right now, that we are reimagining, that is a better word, reimagining at the high school. Sorry.
Right there.
Yeah. So that was a retirement. Let's see. We have the fifth grade counselor with benefits, that was, we had a half, 0.55 position, counselor position at the high school that we made whole for that one, we just moved that position down to KISS. The pyramid coach is grant-funded, our attendance coordinator, we were able to find funding through, again, another retirement, and the KMS was grant-funded.
Now, the ones that are grant-funded, are these grants that are going to be continuing on, or are these grants that you anticipate expiring in the next couple of years? And if that's the case, what would be the plan going forward? Would those be positions that would then later get moved into the operating buddy side as far as the, what's paid for through the taxes?
Potentially. So the pyramid coach, you know, potentially is a grant that could go away, although another one could take its place because there's always grants coming out. The math interventionist is a more, it's a title grant, so we receive title grants consistently every year.
Thank you.
So I still, I realize that you're still in the 1040 B complaint, and I did hear that Killenley has, the school district has the most classified as social workers. So how many of those positions are actually mandated by the state?
We don't have any mandates by the state for social workers, there's no specific number that a school district needs.
No, no mandates for the SEL paras or...
No, nothing like that.
Oh, can I go on that? Because when I read the state statute, it's very confusing, it seems like there's a lot that are mandated. That kind of is what my question is about all of the staff. So if you had to say in terms of your staff, of these three things, could you qualify what percentage was of these three things? So how much of the staff is mandated or regulated? That's the one thing. How much of your staff do you keep this certain amount because it's best practice? And how much do you keep because it's absolutely necessary? Because that's very confusing to me, like, of course, you don't want to cut staff or whatever, but when we look at the budget, that obviously is the largest portion. So how much is mandated? How much do you do just, oh, this is best practice? And how much you're like, oh, my God, we couldn't handle the class?
I mean, you, you have to offer, there are certain things, I guess, you would have to offer. I'm thinking about when you get to middle school and high school and you need to have math teachers, you need to have English teachers, social studies, like, that's all part of curriculum that all children need to have science, they all need to have math. PE, there are requirements around PE. Some other specials are not mandated, there's not any kind of legislation, you need so many hours of art, for instance, and special education, obviously, all of those positions. The number could look different from school to school, you certainly wouldn't want a caseload for one special education teacher that is so untenable that he or she could not provide the hours of services mandated in the IEP. That would be dependent upon the number of students on a certain special education teacher's You know, in Connecticut, I do not believe they have, you know, a cap on class size at the elementary level, but I, you know, in elementary, you want to keep your class sizes relatively low. I'm a former, I was a former elementary teacher of first grade, like, you, you don't want 30 first graders, it's, that's never a good scene. But mandate, you know, that's what I can think when I think about, you know, mandated positions, and I don't know what the percentage, I would have to do that, you know, I don't have that.
It definitely makes me curious, when we look at this large budget and the, the main thing is staff, and no one wants to cut staff, but where, where are we with those concepts, you know, so...
Sure, thanks.
Because I think I had looked at Hartford Public Schools, their, the way that their budget was printed, presented, and I believe their student population was something like 300 students to one guidance counselor.
Okay, that's higher than what we are, but it, I can see that happening, you know, some schools, districts, yeah.
I have a question. So if I'm reading your graph right, we're at 65% plus increase in the salary and benefits. Can you explain that?
Hold on, let me just make sure I'm on the right graph.
Percent of increase.
Percent of increase. Okay, say it one more time, sorry.
Okay, I'm just curious how you came up with 65% of salary and benefit increases.
Right, so that's from last year, last year's budget, or it's this year's budget, really, this year's budget to next year's budget, that would be the percent of increase of that line, of the salary and benefit line. So that's how much it would go up on just that line.
And so with the, the packages, is that the, the major increase in that number?
No, that wouldn't be a major increase. Do you want to say exactly what it is? You have it out.
Yep, oh, percentage of the, right, so the, the overall increase is the 1.4 million increase, so we took what the increase, for example, of salaries is 1,166, what percentage of that is the increase?
Right, so you're at 65%, so...
Correct.
65% of the total increase.
Right, the total increase, but does that, does that, is that from raises, is that from added positions?
Oh, sure, I, yes, yes. Got it, I got your question now. Uh, yes, so that is, all contracted, negotiated contract, they are raises, so every year, teachers are on a scale, so with years of experience, they would move up on the salary scale. Same for paraprofessionals or nurses or anyone that's in, has a contract that has been negotiated. They have different steps for each year of service, and that does go up over time. Yes.
So that, so I guess, how many, how many added positions does that include? Is just a, just a package, is that you're putting in?
Yep, so just, it just, only the ones that the Board of Education actually approved, so not all of the packages that I put forth to the board for consideration were moved forward, they moved forward five. So those, yeah, those would be in there, right? Yep.
I've got one question. Looking at the blue booklet that we received a few weeks ago, on page one, where it's the 24, 25 Board of Education, and the date on this one was 3/13/24. On page one, where it's showing the differences between 23, 24 to 24, 25, I see an increase on the salary line of the 1.1 million, but I see a reduction of 8,000 in benefits. Where's that reduction coming from, considering we're adding positions and if people are getting contractual raises, don't the benefits increase if it's like a fixed percentage of their salary?
Good question. So one of the good items is that the health insurance has not increased for next year for both the town and the school, and also, everything was based on people that are in the plan. We've had quite a few people that are no longer taking the coverage, so that does lower the costs for the benefits.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question? So I have a question. So I ask this every year, and I think this year I might get an answer.
Gosh, it's a lot of pressure.
No, no, I think you're very transparent and you're willing to work with us and share information. So I know things have changed since COVID with paraprofessionals, and I, I know, years ago, it used to be tier one, tier two, tier three.
For paras?
Yes.
Hmm.
So the specialized, so the tier three was the highest specialized specialization.
Do you mean for salary or the work they perform?
No, I mean the work they perform and the students they work with.
So we have...
Because my, my son was specialized.
I know what you mean.
I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so tier three, I think you're thinking of the tier three program, you know, highly specialized program, and paras that work in that program.
Correct, with the kids with actual disabilities.
Absolutely.
So, so this is my question, and this is no affront or no disrespect to any other paraprofessional that's not at that level with a child with special needs, not behavioral issues.
Sure.
What would you say, how many special needs paraprofessionals do we have in this district?
I can tell you that.
Thank you.
Actual people or full-time equivalencies? Which one would you like?
Actual, full-time, however, that are meeting the needs of those kids that really need that support, and they're not just behavioral issues under SEL. So...
Okay.
Disabilities, that's what I want to know.
Yes, special education paraprofessionals, that's what you're looking for, right?
Exactly.
Yes. So we have roughly 115.
Okay.
So I will say that almost all of our paraprofessionals are special education paraprofessionals. The, I, I mean, we have a small handful grant-funded of kindergarten paraprofessionals, those are Title I funded paraprofessionals that are not necessarily special education paraprofessionals, but the lion's share of paraprofessionals are...
Are the top tier that work with the kids that really need it.
Yep, yep.
So I had heard something or read something, I tried watching the hearing.
Okay.
There was some, something, I didn't quite catch the whole thing, but it was something about, there were about 20 of our paras that could actually be social workers or social... Did you catch that, Ula?
Are they, are they the SEL paras?
I don't know, I, I just wanted some clarification on that, because I wanted to see where they fall in, like, would they be helping with the guidance counselors? Or would they be working with the kids that need the mental health help? Like, I was trying to see, like, what exactly that...
Right.
...tends to serve to, because it seems like we have a lot of social supports.
Yes.
And I'd like, like, since the SEL program started in Killenley, I just wanted to know how much more staff do we have that supports the SEL? Because I know it's throughout the school district, I get that. But I was wondering how much of that staff has been hired and not grant-funded, but has now become staff that specifically support the SEL programs throughout the district?
So I, if you're looking for the number of paraprofessionals in like the tier three program, I would have to go back and break that out again. I'm not entirely sure who's assigned to what program. I have it by school, but I don't have it by program.
But you said about 115.
Across the entire district.
Excellent.
Pre-K to 12.
Yep, I think that's wonderful for the number of students we have.
Yes.
And I would think that would cover our needs.
Yes, yes, and we do have a couple paraprofessionals that are, I guess, labeled, if you will, it's kind of a bad word to say about someone, but titled is better, titled SEL paraprofessionals.
Okay. And can you explain the difference?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
That's what people ask me all the time, and I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, right, no, that's a really good question. One of those is actually in the decision packages that the Board of Education approved.
Yeah, I see that.
Yes, so in S, the SEL paraprofessional that is in this, for a decision package approval by the Board of Education is almost like an apprentice, I almost call her, like an apprentice for our social worker, and she works at KMS. And so she works alongside our social worker there, and if our social worker is busy, she is tending to students that might need some de-escalation, they may need some cool down, they may need a break, they may need to just resituate themselves. So she works almost as an apprentice to our social worker, that's how I best can explain...
So with the more littles?
Yep, yep. Elementary, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Oh, one more thing, yes. I just thought, I have ADHD, if it comes, I have to say it. So how, so for core academics, how much staff do we need? Or how much have we increased since COVID? How many more staff are actual core academics, math, science, social studies, language arts?
Let me see if this chart can break it out.
Do, have we brought on or that, do we have enough? Is, are all those positions filled?
Oh, I see where your question is. Okay. We, right now, we have a few positions that are open, but not in core academics, they are special education positions that are open right now. Those are really the only open positions we have.
So our core academics are all covered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Now, just on that, again, like, I remember Lydia was always saying, we're not doing this special ed, we're not doing the special ed. So these open ones, like, are we covered for our mandates or state mandates or we are?
Yes, yes, so, you know, we have to be very creative in how we cover those hours. I know, it puts a huge burden on the staff that we have now because their caseloads become very, very large. So shout out to all our special ed teachers that are working really hard right now because we do have those openings.
Now, just because I don't know the answer to these things, is special ed different than IEPs? Like, is everyone who has an IEP special ed or...
Yes.
Okay, much harder, right? Special ed's harder.
So, so an IEP is a student's individualized education plan, and in a student's individualized education plan are specific hours of special education support that they need by a special, to be delivered by a special education teacher. And so that's where those hours live in the IEP.
Yeah, so they're called accommodations, so each child, child goes through a bunch of different testing, and then the IEP is written, so an individual education plan per student that needs those, and they all have different accommodations. But I've heard through the years that, you know, we, our IEPs are not being met, and the kids aren't getting the accommodation, so I just wanted to make sure that that's all covered and we are good with all of that.
We have worked really hard to find creative ways to make sure that all of those accommodations are being met, those hours are being met, because we're mandated by law, we have to meet those.
Right, right, yeah, it becomes a litigation situation with parents, so I commend you for that, thank you. Being the mom of a special needs student, I appreciate that. It can be very difficult.
Yes, yes, it can.
So when my kids are in school, they didn't quite qualify for an IEP, but they had 504s. Do you still use those?
We do, yeah.
Okay, so it's, and Michelle, a 504 plan is one step down from an IEP? It still gives them special accommodations, but it's not mandated?
Yeah, so the accommodations are still...
It's more not a litigation issue.
Yeah, so 504 could be for some different types of reasons, you could get a, let's say, you broke your arm playing baseball, and you can't write, but it's your hand that you write with. So you might have a 504 for a short period of time while you can't write, so you might get notes from a peer, or you might get a teacher typing out notes for you, or something like that, that's a short accommodation, right? You could have a student that maybe has ADHD and, you know, but still is academically, you know, doing okay, but may need some support, they may need to sit closer to the teacher, they may need some constant reminders to stay on task, there might be some things that we can do outside of an IEP, they don't qualify for an IEP or special education support from a special... They don't qualify for an IEP or special education support from a special education teacher. But in the classroom with their regular education teacher, they might need some support in other ways. Yeah.
Mr. Grantowski?
On the budget adjustment reduction page.
Sure.
Using the operation maintenance, sixty-five thousand dollars. We have that massive public water supply system up there, it's a lot of issues. Do we have like a C and R account for that so that we can put money into that? You get that massive lightning strike that is not, or, you know, and the same thing with the turf field, that has a set life. Are we putting money away, you know?
Yep.
The reduction here, what are we putting money away toward? Wait, you can't hold money, but, like the buses, the town holds money for the buses. Is there anything like that, that we can do that we, or like, I don't know, or yesterday, whatever happened with the SC systems? I guess we could use the non-lapsing account if something goes awry, but. Ongoing maintenance, historically, it seems like that's an area that we've cut. It's not, it's not directly involved with the kids, but they lost a day of school yesterday.
Yeah.
So.
Do you speak of the pump house, is that what you're speaking of?
Uh, in general, I, I don't know all the details.
Right.
I get piecemeal and sometimes it's not good.
I know. So, the reductions that you see in operation maintenance would not be reducing what we have for repairs. It would be more in the supplies. Yeah, supplies, equipment or property. We wouldn't reduce that line because you were absolutely right, things happen all the time and we need to fix them, so.
What is that, where, where does that? Well, I just see it there, you know, so.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, yeah, we wouldn't reduce our actual maintenance or repair line. That would be too risky to do that. And the other thing you mentioned was the turf field, so that's through a trust that we have, the Begary Trust. And money is set aside each year to continue to maintain the turf field.
But is that sufficient? I think maybe I'm going the next step, that when we put it in, there was additional monies more than what the trust had to put the turf field in.
Yep.
So, when it comes to physically replacing it at year fifteen or whatever, I guess it's a, or twelve, I don't know, did they expect it?
Right, that's a great question.
Surprises that all of a sudden we're way short.
No, you're absolutely right, and we have a plan for that. So, all of the, like, ticket sales, everything that comes in from our sporting events, we have a certain amount that we have to put away each year. I do not know the exact number, I don't know if you know.
Thirty thousand.
That's, I was gonna say thirty-two thousand, but thirty-ish thousand dollars that we have to put away every year for that exact reason. So, that's a plan that was already developed when we put in the turf field for that reason. So, when we do have to replace it, we do have that funding from the revenue that our sporting events generate.
But who holds that money?
So, we have that, yep, we have that account.
You guys can't hold over money?
Mary's coming.
Mary's coming to explain.
So, what you're talking, what they're just talking about with regards to athletic, the ticket sales and stuff like that, that all goes into a special revenue account or a special revenue fund, so it's a separate fund outside of the general fund. You're right, the general fund money, they can't retain any of that money across over fiscal years. Special revenue funds don't expire at the end of the fiscal year, they carry forward. It's like a trust fund or another multi-purpose fund. So, it has different rules around it, so those are able to cross fiscal years. The general fund, general operating budget is the fund, the general fund is what closes at the end of the fiscal year. That they can't retain any, any funding in. So, the athletic funds all go into a special, they're considered a special revenue fund, which is housed in a separate fund accounting from the general fund.
Cause this is the first, well, maybe it's past, I see everything else, you know, we have the non-lapsing account. That was a great thing to come along, which we didn't have a few years ago.
So, you'll see, you see the special revenue funds in our audit. So, all of those are detailed in the sub-schedules of our audits, they're in usually the page somewhere around, like, sixty-five to seventy-five range is all the special revenue funds. And they're all, you know, usually they're designated for a specific purpose. That's what makes it a special revenue, which means the revenue that goes into it is required to be utilized for a specific purpose. Very similar like our C and R fund, that is, you know, would be considered like a special, a specialized fund. They have athletic funds, they also have other special revenue funds, like the cafeteria fund is also a special revenue fund. Any other revenue they receive from cafeteria sales is required to be spent on cafeteria-related equipment, product, whatever, services. And, and that can move, that can go, you know, across fiscal years as well.
Cause it's, it's nice to have that out there, that, cause in general, we throw out, the Board of Ed has no money at the end of the year. It all goes to the town. So, I wanna emphasize what you're saying, that we, we create these, there is money and is held for those accounts, that. It's, it's conflicting, when I get hammered with some of this stuff.
Well, and the focus right now really is the general fund because that is what drives the mill rate, right? Your general fund is what is developing your mill rate, and that is what is, your, that's what your, your property tax calculation is based on, is that, i- is what's being paid for out of your general fund. Your special revenue funds cover whatever the designated special purpose is for. And things that are in the general fund may not be able to be funded out of those special revenue funds, which is why you have the, the general fund and the, and the property tax calculation.
But to Ed's point, now I have a question. Are you, so you're taking the ticket money and you're putting it into this special fund that doesn't hit the, the bottom line of the mill rate? Are you able to put more in preparation of that coming?
So, the council, or the council could, very similar to what we do with the Board of Education's bus C and R, where we, that, there is money that is dedicated to go into that, that account to be able to pay for. The, they could, that could be a budgeted item that gets transferred into there. It sounds like they've already evaluated what they're gonna need when they get to that replacement process, and they've made steps for what they would need. So, you wouldn't, they're not looking or requesting for additional funds to go into there as a lead-up or a build-up to that type of capital project. But, yeah, there's always the possibility to add more funds or budget in the general fund for additional contribution to whatever that special revenue fund is.
See, cause a lot of that, we don't wanna add to the minimum budget requirement or whatever that is. That's another major, you know, and these funds sort of fall below the radar a little bit.
Yeah, they're like our capital funds, it's the same, almost the same function.
Correct, cause they're a separate fund, yeah, yeah.
So, so Dr. Nash, you're saying, so there's a replacement plan for the field, but what about for the disposal of it, because that's quite costly. The disposal of the car, and there's only two places in the whole United States. Last I checked about a year ago, that will take turf because of how toxic it is.
So, I'll double check to see the, I have not gone in depth of the details of that plan.
Quite expensive.
That was way before my time, but I, I know Christine has it, and I know she's set aside what's needed. I have full faith that she has gone through every detail to make sure that the disposal has been accounted for, but I can go back and double check it.
Yeah, that would, that, that's a lot of money.
Yep.
So, and then you have to really pre-plan?
Sure.
On that, because like I said, there's only two places in the whole United States that will take it, so.
Interesting.
We did a lot of research.
Yep, I'm sure. Okay.
So, if I understand, the booklet.
Okay.
Tony, is your mic on?
So, the booklet represents forty-eight million, two-hundred-twelve thousand on pages three through five, correct?
Pages three through five of the, is that in the booklet you're talking about?
Just the booklet, yeah, not broken down.
Yep.
I think it's more broken down here. So, I just, I just wanna understand a couple of numbers and what they are.
Sure.
On page three, when, cause there's four or five of them that add up to about one point two-five million of the one point four million dollar increase.
Okay.
So, when I look at school administration, line five-one-one-two, with an increase of twelve point seven-six percent, two-hundred-fifty-six thousand, would that be like negotiated raises? Is that what, is that what that is for school administration?
So, if I miss something, catch me, but, so we, we did move forward an athletic director this year. That's an administrative position, as well as the director of mental health that was grant-funded, that the board moved forward into the operating budget, and that is also administrative, plus what you just said, which is contracted increases.
Okay.
Did I forget something?
So, if I, so those two, those two positions alone are over two-hundred thousand, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's two, okay. The next line, teacher salaries, it's a big number, three point four-eight, that's, I believe you explained every year, there's gonna be a certain percentage of raises that are given, and then is some of that negotiated? Or is this just kind of the combination of both?
They're all negotiated.
Okay.
Yep, so all the teachers' contracts are negotiated every three years, they got a new three-year contract.
Okay.
And so, the last time they negotiated, I believe there was about a five percent increase across three years, so that's kind of what you're seeing there.
Okay, when we get to five-one-two-zero, non-certified salaries goes up considerably, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yes.
I just don't know what it is, and I'm curious what it is.
I might miss something on this one, right? Okay, here we go. Uh, this is with the decision packages that we, that the board approved, that is our SEL specialist, our.
District attendance coordinator.
District attendance coordinator, and there's one more, I thought.
Pyramid coach.
Thank you, the pyramid coach.
Okay, so that's three positions.
Well, yes, and then there's also, there's just increases of contracted steps, right? So, it's that plus.
Okay. Five-one-two-six substitutes.
Okay.
Is it just the, is that just an increase of needing more from short staff? Or is, or is it just, we just finding that? It was just, it was a good sized number, almost ten percent.
That's a good question. So, we have found that we typically go over in that line, for the past couple of years, we've gone over in that line, and so we've just readjusted so that we don't go over in that line in the coming year.
On page four, fifty-five-thirty communications, we talked about a zero communication, but it's a sixty-seven percent increase of two-sixty-four.
Yep, great question.
Wanted to understand what it was.
Yeah, those are all really good questions. So, communications was also an area in this current budget last year that we did, we moved a lot of our communications into grants to reduce the bottom line of this current fiscal year's budget. And so, those, well, the grant that we're talking about is the ESER grant that I mentioned earlier. So, all those, they no longer have a place to live, so they have to come back into the operating budget. So, last year, you know, we wanted to bring our operating budget down to a certain number. And to do that, we did reductions, as well as finding other funding sources for things like communications. So, we took a significant amount of our communications and moved it into our ESER funds. And now they're gone, so we have to put them back because those are things you need. Those are like your, your copier contracts, you need to have, your phone contracts. So, all those things fall, internet falls all under communications.
Okay, this one's probably fifty-five, sixty tuition, is, is that like placement for someone that has to be out of district? Is that what that is, a student that's gonna be placed out of district, is that what that additional is?
That one is, yes, yep.
Okay, and the last one is on page five, fifty-six-eleven instructional supply warehouse. It didn't appear for the, a couple of years, and then it's a forty thousand dollar request.
That's, that's your copy paper?
Oh, yes, right. So, we didn't need to buy a copy paper because we pre-purchased a lot of copy paper
Okay.
with grant funds that we could when we had them, and now we need copy paper.
Well, that's one point two-five million of the one point four.
Okay.
I just was curious of.
Those, those are good questions.
Broke down, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yeah.
So, the use of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four surplus funds, so technically, you're just anticipating this as a return, so you're just gonna allocate that to the next year's budget? Is that how that works? Because, because you really can't use it to spend on salaries benefits.
Right.
Right, this year.
Yep.
To reduce.
Right.
So, next year, you're anticipating the seven hundred thousand to go into next year's budget.
So, let me see if I can give like an example. It's always better with an example, I think. So, let's say you have, for instance, I mentioned we have a couple of special education positions that are not filled, right? But we have those, that money budgeted for because we anticipated to fill them this year, but we didn't fill them this year. Plus the benefits that go along with those positions. So, that money, at this point in the year, we know, like, even if we hired someone now at top step, we would never spend all the money that we had budgeted for an entire year for that educator, plus their benefits. So, we can calculate, well, not me, but Christine can calculate what we would need to keep there just in case, you know, you never know, we could hire someone tomorrow to fill that position for the rest of the year. But, so we'll keep enough just in case we do hire someone, cause we're still looking all the time. But we know we can take this amount of money, cause we never will spend that amount of money. And we can use that amount of money to pre-spend from next year's budget some supplies. Does that example help a little bit? No.
It is kind of an interesting concept, because you're not, you're saying you're not allowed to use this for salaries, but you're getting it from salaries.
We do get some of that.
Then you can pre-buy.
This year, this year, but we couldn't put it forth to salaries for next year.
So, what happens the following year, is that, is that like your perpetual, it's always gonna be?
Well, in theory, we hope not, right? We, in theory, you hope you fill all your positions at the step that you hope to fill them at, and everyone, well, I mean, not everyone has to take the benefits, right? So, some people opt not to take their benefits, their, you know, spouse can have benefits, and so they opt not to take the benefits. But we have to still budget for it, because if they take the benefits, we have to offer the benefits.
So, this, this money you're talking, like you, your, your example before.
Yeah.
A little trouble with, a lot of trouble, but they'll do.
I'll work on it.
So, this is, this seven hundred thousand, you're taking that and you're pre-buying items to drop down the budget for next year.
That's right, yes.
So, in essence, you're really not changing the budget, you're taking money from this year to decrease your budget for next year.
Right, yes, that's it.
I wouldn't be excited, but yeah, okay.
I'm excited.
So, what is, what is your, without this seven hundred thousand, what is your anticipated turnback from money?
So, like I mentioned before, I, at this point, it's very hard to say, like, you know, we're gonna turn back this much, but I can, I can say that with confidence, we will turn back what we need to replenish the non-lapsing fund back to its two million cap, because we did use some of it for projects this year. You know, a little over our, it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars, I think, that we used this year for projects. So, we always wanna make sure that we have a healthy non-lapsing, should something happen, like you said, you know, we need to take from our non-lapsing to repair something. But I don't intend to turn back, as we have in years past, a lot of money.
To be honest, it, it kinda seems like we're, we're taking that turnback money and we're just, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. It seems like we're spending this money that we have left over to increase, decrease the budget for next year.
Okay, yep, I'll, I'll explain that, sure thing, yeah. I can explain that, so I, I actually had a slide on that for the Board of Education, or maybe I just talked about it. So, it is very common for school districts, every school district I've ever worked for has a surplus at the end of the year. That is, because you just.
Want to have a surplus. We don't wanna be the other.
You never wanna be the other way. And you can.
Even a dollar, right?
Right. And you can use your surplus in a couple of different ways. So, one way I have seen school districts use surplus is to take care at the end of the year of larger projects that they, you know, knew that probably wouldn't get passed through the Board of Education, but needed to be done. Maybe they needed. Uh, maybe they needed a new track, you know, or something, something, maybe they needed to purchase, uh, new view boards for an entire building, you know, a large project that they knew wouldn't get passed through their budget, but they still need to do, so they will use that surplus funds for that. We, in Killingley, have gotten a pattern of doing this kind of pre-spending with surplus fund dance. Um, and it would be, it's very hard to get out of that. Once you get in that cycle, and it's not right or wrong, I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing it this way. It's just, like you said, like, it's just a way of doing it. You, we could take that surplus fund and say, all right, let's, let's get a new turf field. I'm just making that up, but like, let's do some big project. But no, we're not doing that, because we want to reduce the bottom line from next year's budget to make it more fiscally responsible. And so, that's how we are approaching our surplus. There's two ways of doing it, really. We just chose one way, because that's the cycle we're in.
Is it fair to say that if you fill all the positions you had for the year, you, you wouldn't be using this money?
Potentially, I mean, you'd still have benefits, you'd always have savings and benefits, because not everyone takes benefits, right? Um, we've noticed that over the years, more and more of our paraprofessionals are not taking our benefits. They've found more, um, cost-effective budget, uh, or, uh, benefit option, um, that, that's not our benefits, right? Um, but that doesn't mean that we don't put benefits in that, because we could hire a parer tomorrow that takes the benefits, and that comes with the job. Yep.
How much do you lose in the ARPA funds?
Um, the last, this last
For the next, yeah.
Yep, so it's about 900,000 dollars, so right, it's the first slide, actually, I think it's Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the coyote.
One thing I will say, speaking of the cliff, um, it is a slippery slope to go continuing on with pre-purchasing stuff, because if you get a year where there is no surplus, that next year is your fiscal cliff.
Yeah.
Because that next year, you don't have that 700,000 dollars to pre-purchase stuff. So, then all of a sudden, even though they're not using any more supplies that next year, you're seeing a huge increase in the budget, because you've been pre-purchasing for so long. And if you have a year you can't pre-purchase, because there's no surplus, then the budget is a huge increase.
My, my, my issue is
On that item, yeah.
We're, we're okay, we're, we're X amount of dollars in the positive this year.
Yes.
And we're taking that money and putting it to next year. But if we're, if we're talking about the 987,000, then that kind of equals out.
Almost, yeah. So, Dr. Nash.
Yes.
On the attendance coordinator, I know you had done some incentive plans to get kids to come in, and you did like a 30-day no-absence.
Yep.
Um, are you guys still sending the late bus to pick up the kids? Or was, do, remember, was that last year or year before? I mean, if they hadn't made the bus, you guys were sending them around
Yes, we, if
to kind of stop the truancy.
If there is
Are you still doing that?
Yeah, we do have that option, yep.
Now, is that part of this attendance coordinator's position? So, what would that fall under budget-wise? And what does that cost?
That's just in our transportation line.
That's just in the transportation line. And how effective has that been since you started it? As far as helping those particular kids that kind of, I'm sure you have repeat offenders. Are they
Yes.
kind of coming around?
And we don't need to use that every day, um, but we have that availability. Should we need to use it for a short span of time, until we can get a student back in on time on, on regular bus.
So, what exactly does the, I know it sounds ridiculous.
Yeah.
But I know people are going to ask, what exactly does? Because I know that used to be handled in the front office.
Yeah.
So, what is that?
Oh, yeah, this is totally different, yeah. So, um, this, this particular individual, um, she has kind of revamped our entire, um, the way that we collect attendance data, look at attendance data, and take action on that attendance data. Um, and so, if a student is starting to fall behind on attendance, we have a tier one, a tier two, and a tier three approach. You know, each, each tier, I have a slide for it in a different slide deck, but, um, each tier has a different, um, set of actions that happen, like first step, these are the interventions that happen, second step, these are the interventions that happen. And she oversees that across the entire district. And she has a tab on, she has this massive spreadsheet that keeps a tab on all students that are slipping in their attendance. She also does, uh, monthly attendance, um, incentives. Like you said, we just had the March Madness incentive across the district. Um, so she or- organizes and coordinates all that. And a big part of her job, um, is home visits. So, going into homes and working with families to understand the barriers of why students aren't coming to school. So, with our little ones, um, usually, they want to come to school, but there's some, something, something in the home that she has to kind of help identify, and then offer support, whether it's through community partners or something that we can offer through the school to help that family get that student on, out to the bus stop on time every day. Um, older kids, obviously, sometimes there's school avoidance issues, and so they need a different kind of support.
So, this would replace like the disciplinary type old school, like truancy offers. This would take a softer approach and try and work with the student instead of
Yeah, I guess you could say that. I mean, there are cases where
Kind of a newer approach to that.
We have tried and tried and tried and tried, and at that point, we say, you know, at, at this point to the family, you, you, um, you know, it, this is not necessarily working. Um, you may want to unenroll your student, um, you know, if they're of a certain age, of course, and they're not coming to school. Um, so, you know, that does happen sometimes too, because we've tried and tried and haven't made the progress.
There's, there's been a great increase, right? Uh, do you have numbers, Mrs. Nash?
Yeah, so we've been able to decrease our, um, chronic absenteeism greatly, um, from last year and then the year before. I have that in another slide deck, too. Um, but we have, we've decreased it significantly, you know. I think we're in the maybe 20, 20% range for chronic absenteeism, and, you know, there were times where we were in the 40% for chronic absenteeism in the last couple of years. So, after the pandemic, we could not get traction with kids coming back to school. We just couldn't get them back in. And, um, our attendance coordinator has done such yeoman's work with getting to all these families and getting them back in.
Well, thank you for going the extra mile, because a lot of these kids do need supports.
Yep.
And in Killingley, they seem to get them, so.
They do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question on the field trips for, um, KHS Athletics.
Sure.
There's a 25% increase. Do you have a year-to-date on the current?
All right, Karen will get that for you.
78,000, what page are you on?
Oh, I have that, you gave that to me today. It was 78,000, yeah. I asked that question today. I forgot.
And is that all field trips for the whole school, or is that athletics?
This is just athletics.
That's just athletics?
And that's for the outsourcing?
Yes, yeah, so that's a great question. Um, and it was a question I had today, and I asked you that. Um, so why did that go up so much? Um, that's because we, um, have, again, kind of gone over in that line, and so we want to, you know, make that a more realistic number for next year. Um, we have to outsource, um, a lot of our transportation for athletics, um, simply because we, A, we don't have enough drivers, and B, many of our athletics events are happening during our other schools' dismissals. So, if we took drivers off of our KMS and KCS dismissals to go to sports events, then we wouldn't have enough drivers to bring our kid, our elementary kids home. Um, so, we are looking to fill more. The, the ultimate goal would be to fill more driver positions for ourselves, so we don't have to outsource. Um, but that, you know, sometimes that can be challenging to find bus drivers.
Now, now, is some of that because of all the state championships we've been participating in lately?
Those, all those state championships we did, of course.
Banners all over the gym.
Of course, all of that contributes, right?
So, Dr. Nash, how much of a problem? I know it was a significant problem trying to find bus drivers, but how much have we improved?
Oh, yeah, greatly.
Are we still in danger zone, or we're still good? Like, we're getting
Not in the danger, I would not say we're in the danger zone. Um, could we use a few more? Yes. A few more? Yes.
A couple more?
Yeah.
Not bad.
And that's a split, that's a split day. That, a driver has to, you're finding, you need to find someone that can do a split day.
Yeah, that's a tough position, right? Early morning and then afternoon, um, yep.
And then you have a few hours.
Yeah.
Then you got to be back.
Yep.
Yeah, that's hard.
Friends with one of your bus drivers coming in.
You've done well then to keep, because that's very difficult.
Yep.
Find the right individuals.
Right.
Uh, you had said, uh, so I have the expanded book and ultras from going to the, the meetings, and, and it's really amazing, like every pencil and notebook is broken down. So, if people wanted to see that, where did you say that was, Mrs. Nash?
Yeah, and, um
Dr. Nash, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. And Ms. Murphy, I just want to, uh, just make it clear that the, that one that you have is my, uh, budget, but the board's budget
Oh, yes.
is the new one that you have at your table, right? Okay, um, so, I mean, we don't have that right now.
No, I, I thought you I thought you did, I can, I can make some copies, but some people wanted it because of the breakdown.
Oh, we can give that to any, yeah.
People should see the breakdown, because it's, it's phenomenal, so.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, just let us know. We have plenty of copies, yep.
Now, is that going to be posted? Will that be posted on the school site for like before the public hearing? So, people can actually dial in if they want to? That's one thing we try to get people to look at, that come?
I believe we could do that.
Is that something you can post on the website?
I'm not sure, I'd have to look at what the detail actually, I have to make sure there's nothing there that we in the, in the notes, I'm thinking about, we have to go through, because some of the things are like internal things.
Oh, okay.
You know, with our notes.
But like, say for instance, like this.
I mean, I'm fine with you all having them.
Right, right.
But we, I think we could be, we could take some of those notes off.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm fine with all of you having it.
I'm just asking, because I know people, a lot of people go to the websites, and we're updating our website too, so.
Right.
We're trying to get as much out there for the public to see
No, I agree.
You know, before votes and things.
Yeah, I, I want to get as much transparency as possible.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to say something about Dr. Nash's budget. Uh, all nine members of the Board of Ed cut as much as we felt we could cut and still keep Killingley schools going in the right direction. We looked it all over, uh, she came in with a lean budget, but we cut it even more, and we cut it more. And, uh, we cut it to the point where all nine members of the Board agreed that this was a fair budget put on by the superintendent, and it was fair to taxpayers of Killingley. Then we went back and forth about how much more can the taxpayer afford? And I, I'm one of those senior citizens on a fixed income, and you say, how much more can he afford? And this was a budget that all nine members felt that it was fair to the Killingley school system. And we want to thank Dr. Nash for presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome, that's kind.
Thank you.
I have another question. On the ARPA funds, what, what percentage of that funds that got put into programs and such that we don't need? Like extended internet, um, at-home
Okay, I think
at-home studies, is there a percentage that we don't need out of that money?
So, what did we cut from communications, I think is what you're asking, when we went through to see what, those kind of, um, pandemic-esque?
Right.
Uh, I don't know exactly that number, I could, I'm trying to think of how we would figure that out. We would have to go to see what we cut from those, like, initial conversations.
I know that you reduced a lot of the tutors.
I'm talking about in communications, all of those, um, subscriptions that we reduced. I think we can go back to the original.
I'm just curious.
I don't have that off the top of my head. We did cut a lot, um, but I don't know the number.
That was redirected, correct?
I'm sorry, say it again.
That funding will be redirected?
Uh, the funding, um
That funding goes away. The ARP-ESR grant is gone.
Yeah, right, you're right, yeah, yeah.
And it's been there for three, four years?
Yes, it went back four years.
Gone over a four-year span.
You know, I mean, like out of the 900 and something thousand, what didn't, what, what did we cut out of it? Right?
I'm trying to see if I, um, can explain it a better way. What did we cut out of it? Um, so that 987,000 dollars is just salaries and benefits from ARP, uh, from the ESR funding that we have for this current year. That's, that's all that is. Now, there are some other things that are also in ESR funding, um, such as, I mean, we had just moved something, you moved something the other day, what did you move, summer, some, I forgot what you moved the other day?
We moved a lot of things. Moved a lot of things lately.
We did something, and now I can't remember exactly what it was, um
We went from the math interventionist and moved it to behavioral.
Right, okay.
It was summer, it was summer school, because we moved it
Summer school, right.
We moved it out of Title I.
Yes, okay, right, so, for summer school, because ARP-ESR, um, extends until September of 2024, so we have it through the summer. So, we were thinking, how can we keep that math interventionist position at KMS that was a decision package, um, and make it kind of, uh, budget neutral, or take it out of the operating budget? And so, I asked Mr. Guo if he could take summer school, which was in Title I, out of Title I, and put it into the ARP-ESR grant, because we could still use that in the summer, and then we could free up some funding in Title I, which the math interventionists would qualify for Title I. The other decision packages wouldn't qualify for the title grant, but the math interventionists would. So, we could move the math interventionists into the title grant. So, that's, so, there are other things that were, that are in that ESR fund, but we're trying to think of creative ways to like save some of those, or keep some of those positions. So, that's just one example that we did. I don't know if that answered your question. I'm probably just confused every one more.
Can you tell me how much money was spent on food and catering for the school system?
For this current school year, like to date? I don't know if we have that to date, do we?
No, no, we, we
I can get that to you, though. I can get that.
So, personally, I don't think I, I don't think we should be paying for parties, and, you know, when I went to school, if we had an event, everybody had to bring a baked good. If we had a pizza party, everybody had to contribute. And it, I don't think it should come from the townspeople paying for parties.
Understood.
Mr. Grandowski.
Getting back to Andy's point about pre-spending for next year. If we're spending on regular items every time, we should maybe look at, looking down our capital list, capital improvement project list.
Yep.
If we have extra monies, the only thing with that would, you'd have to have something shovel-ready, so that on June 15th, or
Yes.
about, you know, you're going to have, say, you're going to have 500,000 dollars, you know you're going to have 500,000 dollars left over.
Yep.
And you see something, oh, we have a 350,000 capital projects.
Yep.
But if it's not shovel-ready and you can't write a PO,
Yep.
in some respects, that would be easier than, all of a sudden, if it runs out, it, that doesn't, it's not affected, because it's a capital project, you're looking, they keep getting put out, put out, and put out. So, all of a sudden, we find a, a, a home.
Yep.
But, then we have to have a mechanism in place to get it shovel-ready.
And, in, so that, remember I said there's kind of two ways to use surplus? So, that's the second way to use surplus, that we have not necessarily done here in Killingley. We've opted to do more of that, um, surplus, surplus pre-spending, um, just because we're in that cycle. But you're right, I mean, that would be, that, I would love to get out of that pre-spending cycle um, because it's not the mo, um, healthiest way to budget. Um, and it would be better to get into, you know, having a project shovel-ready to do like in May if you know you have a certain amount of money. I agree. We're just not quite there yet.
For some times, we still, there was still more, more than the surplus funds that was turning to the town. I'll take it, I, I, I'll take it on your side, I, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if there's a hunk of change like that and we've got.
Yeah.
We've got capital projects in the works and they just keep, you know, it's always three years out. Always three years out and it never gets to the table. That's something to look at. I mean, you still wanna do some of this too. I mean, if you have it, but.
No, I, I totally hear what you're saying. Yep.
See, I'd like to see if we can have some type of, we've got the C N R, uh, you know, fund for the, the, I always do that. Like, it's like a thing, I'm always not gonna say that. But we've got like the, you know, C N R fund, although it's not called C N R fund, for the turf field. Can't we have that like now for the paper when it's gonna run out again?
Yeah, the supplies.
So, so actually, pre-buying is good because as an alliance district, we can never go back on the budget. So that is actually helping the budget from not having a permanent increase because we don't know how long, how many twenty, thirty years we're gonna be in an alliance district till the state decides to, you know, retest.
Have they made any movement on that? I mean, they're holding all these schools back. And I know the testing has improved, like you've presented how much more efficient, like in all the schools, the kids' scores are going up, but I mean, like, it's almost like they're punishing the alliance districts by keeping them in that.
Once you get in, it's hard to get out.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's unfortunate.
It is.
I do have one question. Um, where in here, what is the line number, um, for legal services as far as attorney representation? Or is that combined underneath another line?
That is, there is a lot that's, it's, so it's not separated out just legal services. There's, it's contracted services. We'll see if you can find it quicker than I can. You, I'm sure you can.
So, okay, so we, we'll discuss the elephant in the room. What specifically has been spent on the ten-four B complaint by this district? What have we spent?
Okay.
But it also includes mediation.
Yep, so it, just getting back to the legal, where it is in the budget, what page is that?
Um, if you look in the detailed budget, it's on page one forty-four and that will give you a breakdown of what's included in that number.
Is that the one?
It's, um, it's a professional technical services.
Yep.
Oh, you mean the, that is part of it, yes.
Yep.
What else would be?
What else would that include? What other line items would be part of that?
For legal fees, sometimes we would use, uh, an attorney for a student expulsion, so that's why that's broken, oh, sorry.
I mean, specific to the ten-four B complaint.
Oh, I don't, I don't have, I don't have the total number here.
Yeah, we wouldn't, or to date, you wouldn't have that?
Not off the top of my head.
But you do have it.
Oh, yeah, we have. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Wow, they were doing so well.
No. I, we can get that, I just don't have that off the top of my head.
Thank you. What, can I ask a question? What is leadership retreat and consultants for, I know it's eight thousand dollars, but what is that?
Yep, so the, I can say our leadership retreat is in our central office, so we're not really going anywhere. Nope, so most of that, no, most of that would be for consultants. Um, for instance, one of the things that we used, uh, out of this line just recently is we had, um, a consultant come in to take a look at our transportation, uh, system to give us, uh, ideas in how we can best, or we can enhance our, uh, system, our transportation, what we can improve upon. Um, so things like that. So when we had, a couple of years ago, we had a special education audit, like that, it would come out of there. I can say that our leadership retreats don't cost any money.
I would like to add one thing, uh, basically, uh, getting back to what, um, Mr. Rivero said as far as keeping in consideration what the taxpayers can afford. Um, one thing that is gonna be a big shift this year and it's because of the revow and how much of an increase there was on the residential side as opposed to the commercial personal property side. Um, even if we were to keep all the budgets flat between the Board of Ed and the town side, we were still gonna see an increase on the residential side due to the percentage increase across the board. Average was higher on the residential side, so the tax burden is starting to shift towards the residential side. So taking that into consideration, even if you had a zero, zero percent increase over the current year and the town came through with a zero percent increase, there still would be a shift to the residential side. Um, and taking that into consideration, that's one thing we've discussed is what can we do to try and limit how big that impact's gonna be?
Right.
I started looking at some numbers and the budget you've presented and also what's been presented to the council, well, the packet that's been presented to the council, the town manager hasn't presented it yet. If we were to, uh, if the grand list had not had any increase over the previous year, um, we'd be looking at an eight points, eight percent increase.
Hmm.
Um, but due to the, the grand list going up, it will look like the mill rate will go down the way the buzzers are presented right now if that was what goes forward and what would pass at the town referendum. Um, but it would be, just because the mill rate goes down, doesn't mean everybody's taxes are gonna go down in their homes. So loo, looking at both of these, it would, the way they sit right now, they'd both be a, a huge hit to everybody on their residential properties.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Well, I agree with you when I knock on doors, I do have, um, Michelle's been with me and there's elderly people say that, um, they can't afford tax increases. I mean, you have families that are living from paycheck to paycheck. We also have elderly people that are living from paycheck to paycheck. And you say you're on a fixed, um, income? Well, if I get a one percent increase, half of it goes to the state to pay for FEMLA. So that's, um, FEMLA tax. So we're not, we, we don't get big increases at work anymore. There's no ten percent, it's like two percent. Yale wanted, wanted to give one percent, so. So we are looking, you know, out for all of the residents. And even if you aren't a homeowner, they're gonna be affected by increases in rents.
Yep.
Thank you.
I know at the beginning of the, if, if everybody's okay, um, I know, um, one of the people that wanted to speak in public, um, so I'd like to entertain, um, I'd like to make the motion to open citizens' comments up again.
I'll second that. They can, we can use that as item six B.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow more citizen comment on the budget.
I'll make that motion.
Tammy made the motion and I believe, Ed, you seconded the motion. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I just wanna say thank you for everything. Um, I will also, if, would you be open to questions if, when any citizens come up and ask them, would you be willing to answer their questions as well?
Sure.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone who would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
John LaBelle, fifty-seven Island Road, Dayville, Connecticut. I have questions on page five, eight and eleven of this, of this handout. I'm just gonna rattle off the line items that have changes that are significant and if you could explain why they're, why they are without me going into the, you know, detailed questions of each one. Is fifty-six thirteen, fifty-six twenty, fifty-six forty-two, fifty-six ninety-two, fifty-seven thirty, fifty-eight ninety on page five.
Yes, some of those are negatives.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
That's right, there, uh, most of them are negatives and I'd like to understand.
Sure.
Um, uh, why, why the drop-off or where, where the allocation goes for those, those activities.
Sure, those are, that's a great question. All right, um, so we'll start with fifty-six thirteen. That's the custodial and maintenance supplies, correct?
Correct.
Yep, um, so that was the reduction that we mentioned earlier. Sorry, I can't see you, but this would, this was the reduction that we had mentioned earlier. We talked about cuts that were made. Um, that was one of the areas that this department cut, um, some of their supplies. And some of that actually will be, uh, surplus, surplus purchases. So things that we reduced from next year's budget, but we will be able to purchase with surplus funds from this current year's budget.
Now, does the school system maintain, uh, critical parts inventory?
Yes.
Okay. The next one.
I'm ready. Okay. Heat energy. Actually, you're better at talking about heat energy than I am.
And that one is a zero change in it, but that is for the high school concession stands. It is the propane gas. There's two very small buildings that.
Everything else is switched over to natural gas.
Right, everything else is for natural gas. So these are the last two bits that are, um, still under propane.
So where do you allocate energy costs?
Um, that would be under utilities, uh, which is, let's see. Um, under, on page four, under the five-four-one-zero, um, that would include electricity, fuel, natural gas. And that is a reduction, um, going forward to next year. Part of that is because there are a number of, um, LED lighting loans that are paid off this year, so we no longer need those funds for next year. And also, um, we have reduced some based on, um, solar panels that have gone online in November and December of this past year. So we are, we don't have a lot of history to say what we are going to say, but we have been able to work with the company to reduce some of the numbers.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is library books and periodicals. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Guo because that is your budget.
Hi there, how are you?
Hi.
So that, that is gonna be also, it's a, it's a cut that was identified, um, across all of the libraries in all the schools, but again, some of that will be made up within the surplus, um, purchasing.
So in next year and the following year, how are you going to handle these costs?
Well, there, there still is a, a large portion of, of money that's allocated to each of the school libraries. Um, they, that is, what you see is the, is the cut that we did across all of the departments right at the beginning of the, of the process. So, um, you know, for example, if, uh, if, uh, the high school budget was allocated ten thousand dollars, um, they still probably have eight, eight thousand, eighty-five hundred dollars in terms of library books. So it's just a small portion of, of some things that they either didn't need to order or are not going to order or are going to purchase before the end of this year.
So the same thing would apply to non-instructional equipment?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, I'm, I'm catching on. Other objects, what's an other object?
Yeah, that's it. I had that question too. And Karen explained it to me. So, uh, for other objects, the reason why there's an increase there is that, um, the transportation department had a negotiated contract. In that negotiated contract, um, was, was terms that they would have a uniform that they would wear. And so the increase there is for purchasing uniforms for our transportation department.
Could you elaborate on that, please?
Let's see, so, uh, in the past, our transportation department did not have uniforms. Um, and when they had their, uh, negotiations for their contract, one of the items that was negotiated and agreed upon in their negotiate, in their contract was that they would, um, be provided with uniforms. So they have, uh, all have, um, shirts that say Killenly Transportation Department on them. Um, also, you know, crossing guards have reflective vests that they have to wear. That, does that help explain it a little bit?
So it's mostly a one-time expense except after several years you have to buy the uniforms again?
Correct.
Yes.
Page eleven. How are the, uh, facilities managed? I see there's an operation and maintenance supervisor. How many square feet of space do the schools occupied and, uh, how are they managed? And, uh, how are they managed in such a way that we keep the capital improvements to the necessary level, but at the necessary level of having critical parts and equipment and, uh, reduction of necessity for new schools, expanding the schools, et cetera? And how is the school profile maintained in conformance with the state regulations and the educational philosophy?
All right, I'm gonna try to unpack that one. Um, so our operations and maintenance supervisor has a team, um, of, uh, maintenance workers that work underneath them. He also manages all of the contracts that we would use to maintain of our, all of our buildings. We have a capital improvement plan, um, for each one of our buildings that speaks specifically to those types of projects that each building, um, needs to have done in a certain time period, or we have kind of a three-year or five-year rolling plan on those projects. Um, I'm trying to remember everything you just asked. Um, they, uh, each school, um, does have kind of a, it's called Tools for Schools. It's a checklist that is gone through each year with our maintenance supervisor along with our building administration. And it, it, basically, it's a multi-page document that you have to go through line by line and check off thing, everything from heating ducts to the paint on the wall, to the plumbing. Um, so that's kind of the yearly assessment that we do to keep maintenance, uh, checks on our building. And I think there was probably more to that question and I may have missed that.
The updating of the portrait of a grand.
And where do we see the maintenance plan and the capital improvements plan?
The capital improvement plan, um, we already had, um, approved by the Board of Education. Um, that is available on, online, so I can, I can certainly get that to you if you need a copy of that. That's a public document.
Does the Board of Education have on-call an environmental assessment, uh, consulting firm?
On-call?
Like, uh, mystic air quality, for instance?
I can answer that in terms of HVAC.
Okay, HVAC.
So, um, the, the school department is in the, in the midst of doing a, a full district-wide HVAC, um, survey, which includes air quality. Um, part of the reason for that is it's a requirement from the state in order to be eligible for substantial grant funding to do a full assessment of all of the systems in each of the buildings. So, um, we're probably, um, a little, a little behind where we'd like. Um, the, the vendor that we're using has taken a, a little bit more time than we had hoped, but we're about halfway through that. Um, so we've received a portion of the, of the report with the hopes that this summer, um, I'll be able to apply for a state grant to fix. fix and update and make modern all of our HVAC systems in all of our schools. Not sure that answers your question, though, so feel free to follow up.
I think you did, for the most part.
All right.
Having managed, having managed millions of square feet of commercial space, that's a critical component of your operation.
So we're working on it.
I'm sure it includes Legionella. The other question I have, final question, is in, in the reporting here, generally, I like to see commitments. You show funds remaining, but I don't, I don't recognize in here commitments that are made, funds to be expended on those commitments, and potential balance of funds, either plus or minus, in each of the line item commitments.
Typically, in a budget document, you're showing the history of, the first two years are actually, actually expended. So the twenty-two, twenty-three does indicate what was actually spent during that year. Twenty-three, twenty-four is showing what's adopted because that's what your comparison is to building for your next year's budget. What you're referring to would be more as an expenditure report, and that would be a different type of report that would show your budgeted, your expended, what is encumbered already, and then what your remaining balance is. But that is not in this particular document.
Right.
That would be an expenditure report that is provided to the Board of Ed and to the Town Council, I believe, on a quarterly basis? Monthly, okay.
So that would be online?
I, I don't know if you posted online or.
Normally, normally, that's brought to the council for every regular town council meeting. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten it in the past few months, and when the town council does get it, that is available to the public.
So my, my point is, if you're managing a budget and you, you wanna see the puts and pulls in a budget, and you're able to do that administratively under GAAP procedures, then it provides an opportunity for whoever is managing to see, well, I've got a project that's running over, I've got a project that's running under, and moving, moving funds around. Thank you for your consideration in allowing me to speak. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is. Yep, executives, item seven, executive session, and there is none. Next item up after that is adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Gattula. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.